And we ask you to guide this city council in the decisions that we make that always are the best decisions for the city. And we thank you for allowing us to be one nation under God and one city controlled and guided by God. Amen. This time, we open it up for oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Do we have any requests to speak?
My name is Shelley Henderson. I'm a resident of Cypress and I'm also the editor of the News Enterprise, but this is the last time that I will be covering the city council meeting here as the editor of the News Enterprise. My last day on the job is on Wednesday, and I would like to express my thanks for the welcome that I have received in the city of Los Alamedos as the editor of the News Enterprise from elected officials, from city staff, from residents. Everyone has been very, very helpful and welcoming to me. However, I am not going anywhere. I am, in fact, moving upstairs in the same building. I will have an office at 11110 Los Alamedos Boulevard, Suite 211. I will become editor of the Orange County Breeze. It is currently online only, and I extend an invitation to everyone to visit the site at www.ocbreeze.com. And I would also request that editor@ocbreeze.com be added to the city's email distribution list so that I can receive news releases from the city and its various departments. I also extend an invitation to civic groups if they would like me to come and speak with them. I would be happy to come and talk to their groups. Again, thank you so much for your welcoming attitude, and if you are curious as to what will become of the News Enterprise, I don't know. As far as I know, Travis Perkins is doing the editing job this week. I don't know who will be doing it next week. They have not offered me that information. I don't know who will be sitting in the office after I leave Wednesday evening. The office in Suite 211 will open on September 1st. In the meantime, if you need to get ahold of me, send email to editor@oc-breeze.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Any other speakers?
Good evening. Richard Murphy. I'm here. Usually when I'm here is about something that I see that just, I don't understand how it happens. In this meeting, we're approving six sets of minutes. I'm asking all of you to come to some agreement on how we're going to do our minutes because this just looks ridiculous. In fact, we have minutes from June the 6th. Let's call it a regular meeting, and then we call it a special session, and then we close and call it a special session. Though I don't know how many times these minutes have been reviewed, but there becomes a point where it's just, it's just not worth the time anymore. So please, come to some decision, either by vote or some type of compromise, so these minutes can be done on a prompt basis. Let's have a question. I don't know the answer about the police car purchases. And the cars have 70,000 miles apiece. Is that considered a lot? It's about a third of what I drive my own cars for. I realize they're driven differently, but is this money really necessary at this point? Can we squeeze a year out of these cars? And personally, I would love to see some transparency with a couple of bids. Not that I'm saying anything's wrong, I just think that's the way to go when we spend any real money. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones.
It was a pretty one.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the council. From there, we're going to go to register of major expenditures.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Councilmember Graham Mahia.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuzamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Poe.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Stevens.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be active upon, by one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item. Do we have any items that anyone wants to pull?
I would like to pull, under the minutes, a number six, the August 1st, 2011 minutes.
Any additional?
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull A1 and A2 also.
All right.
All right, with that, I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. All right, let's go back to A6. Councilmember Poe.
Yes, it's just a typo, I'm sure. It is the page three of the August 1st meeting minutes, and, one, two, three, four, in the fifth paragraph, it says, "Motion and second Edgar and Poe," and then it says, "Carried three to two," and in parentheses, it says, "Kuzamoto slash Graham dash Mahia Poe." I don't think Jerry's name -- Jerry would appreciate having my name on hers. And it is in the next one also. So I just, I'm sure it's a typo, so I think that just --
There's another typo above as well. You want to just break the typos?
Yes. What's the other typo?
Just on the top, "Motion and second," and it has Kuzamoto slash nothing, so.
Oh, I see. Right, yeah. Okay. And with that, I will approve the August 1st, 2011 minutes, or move to approve them.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, and with the caveat, I noticed throughout many of the minutes, there are mistakes and there are incomplete sentences where, if someone were to read this, they would have no idea what we were talking about or what our intent was. So I'm going to go ahead and vote no on these.
All right. Thank you. All right, the next items to be pulled were from Mayor Pro Tem Edgar, and that's item A1.
Okay, item A1, approval of minutes for special meeting, June 6th. Just to kind of reiterate a point to Richard Murphy, with the policy that we have in place is that we take meeting minutes that are action minutes. They're supposed to just basically highlight high-level comment and anything that requires an action. With that in mind, the June 6th special meeting was about the budget, and there's 12 pages of meeting minutes. So just to be consistent with the policy, I'd like to have my comments removed completely, and you could put in or substitute that Mayor Pro Tem Edgar made various comments to the meeting, and I'm fine with that. So that's A1. A2, page 7, approved minutes of the regular meeting, June 20th, 2011. On page 7, making a recommendation indirectly to the museum on potentially inducting a person that's in our community. The name is Eric Halberg, H-A-L-B-E-R-G, and, or Halbig, actually, H-A-L-B-I-G. And so I just wanted to have a correction on the spelling. Those are my changes, and I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, and a further comment, I agree with councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Edgar, that there's inconsistency in these. We have the item where we talked about, and I'm sorry, I don't know which agenda item or which minutes it is, where we speak about the street revitalization, and there's very little comment on it. And then on the next one, we're speaking about the Lexington item, and there's substantially more. So I'd like to see consistency throughout the minutes, and I'm voting no on that.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, the consent calendar is closed. We will move on to item 8, and that is a public hearing, and that's on Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund. And can we please have a snap report?
Mayor Stevens and members of the city council. In 2000, legislation was passed to enhance public safety by ensuring the continuation of the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, and the allocation to each law enforcement agency was increased to a minimum of $100,000, which has been our annual share. With the intent being to increase the numbers of police officers in the community, the SLESF must be used exclusively for frontline law enforcement. The funds may not be used to supplant any existing funding for services already provided by the city. As in the past several years, the police department's plan that has been submitted to the SLESF Oversight Committee is to use the funds to offset the personnel costs for the overfill motorcycle officer, which is an integral part of our traffic safety program. Therefore, staff's recommendation to the council is to conduct a public hearing, adopt resolution number 2011-13, and approve the allocation of the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund for personnel costs and supplies for the police motorcycle officer.
Thank you. And since that is one of the items we have, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item at all?
Open the public hearing.
Open it for a public hearing, yes. All right, seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the council. And we're going to go in council rotation. I don't have any comments on this one. We'll move on to Councilmember Mahia.
I just have one quick question. When we receive these funds, can they be used in the same year for several different items? They can?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Kuzimoto.
No questions or comments, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Poe?
I don't have any questions or comments, and I will make a motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Edgar. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
I have no comment.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed? All right, moving on to discussion item. Council discussion regarding potential request for sanctions regarding public comment media by Brad Sheridan.
This item was discussed briefly at the last meeting, and council staff was asked to bring it back with some additional detail on why no action was taken originally when this was first discussed some time ago. The item has been brought back. We've added additional detail and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. We'll bring it back to the council, and we'll go in rotation on that. And again, it's going to start off with me. Thank you for providing the detail on this report. And, you know, I've reviewed it, and I rereviewed it, and I'm going, and I'll be honest with you, I don't quite understand why we have it on here, but again, I've got to go back to the actions that are listed in here, and they're concerning to me. And a few of the comments that were made were that we were paid to be elected, and there's a figure that was thrown out on here that is way out of line. My 460s have been available, as well as everyone else's have been available, and they have been pulled and reviewed. And so I take issue with that. And I followed that along with the truth and transparency that was mentioned in the article with, you know, you can't continue to make accusations that are basically not supported by evidence or anything else. And so my comment back was, at this point, and maybe it's a question to the city attorney, how much of this was actually truthful? You know, I mean, did we go through the court hearing and everything that was involved in this, and we were found totally innocent on anything, any of these accusations as individuals, correct?
The legal terminology's not quite right there, but the concept is. The court found that there was no evidence of corruption or 1090 violations to support any cause of action.
All right. And so the accusations were made and thrown out there at a crucial time for the city. And, you know, and again, it was an election time, prior to an election time, that all of this was brought up. And it wasn't a pleasant time for any of us up here. And I'll be honest with you, it's just something where you can't continually make accusations on different matters that aren't true, or in this case, we spent a great deal of time and money trying to prove that we did everything correctly. And it was damaging. And that's the other part that bothers me, is that it damaged all of us individuals up here, the ones that were involved in it, myself, Councilmember Poe, Councilmember Edgar. And it cast expersions on our character, our reputation, and it even caused me a great deal of personal inconvenience when it came down to my job. I mean, you've got to realize, we had somebody chasing us around, trying to serve us where we live, and not being successful, and to have your neighbors turn around and say, "Wow, you're being served. What did you do right or wrong?" And have to explain that to your neighbors. Then you have someone running around trying to serve you at your place of employment, and have your coworkers turn around and say, "You know, what's going on? You know, I thought you were a public servant." And that's a tragedy when things like that happen. And it jeopardizes a person's job, it jeopardizes their livelihood, and jeopardizes their standing in the community. It's wrong. Can't spell it any other way. That's wrong when you do something like that. And that's what happened during that period of time. And we were proven that it was wrong, that there was no culpability there or anything when it came down to it. So the damages are there. We didn't initiate this, and I'm just, maybe I'm just a little tired of having lies and accusations, accusations and half-truths be used so often whenever you're going after your public servants. And so often you hear, in fact, there was just a trial in Florida where the people that served on the jury, I believe in the Stacy or the Anthony case, were, two of them, I believe it was two, had to move out of state because of accusations that were made against them. That's wrong. I mean, when you sign on to be a public servant, you're a public servant, and we have to put up with a lot up here. But whenever you make accusations that bother us or affect our families or our jobs, that is totally wrong. Again, this is a public service position. So I'm not going along with the half-truths and innuendos. I just, I think it was wrong, and I thank you for bringing it to us, the way you brought it. And I don't have any further comments on it, other than these are actions that were carried out by an individual and possibly a group of individuals, and for whatever motive they had, and, again, it's not correct to do something like that. So I'm going to move it on from here. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Mahia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to see that this is finally put to rest and that it's been looked at by the city attorney, and we won't have to address this any further in the future. I do concur to some degree with the mayor. All of us have sustained damages from things that people have said, but unfortunately, that goes along with having these seats, and they're definitely not for the faint of heart. And so my respects go out to you, Mayor, for any damage that these things have caused. I know they've had the same effects in my life. During the election, many, many things were said that were proven to not be true, but it's a great city, and it's worth, it's worth all the sacrifices we have to make, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Moving on to Councilmember Kuzimoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no comments on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Poe.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to remember that the, this request was first made to be looked into by former councilmember Dean Zarcos, who was an attorney. And because he was an attorney, he had knowledge of the California Bar Association ethics rules, which we did not have. We aren't, or at least I didn't have. I'm not an attorney. So Councilmember Zarcos is no longer on this council. I'm really not quite sure why this was put on this agenda again by Councilmember Kuzimoto, but as most of you know, when people come up to the podium during public comment, we cannot, as councilmembers, we cannot get into a dialogue back and forth. So we can't defend ourselves or make any comment other than through the city manager about what's being said. We have no control over what is said by community members, and we shouldn't. This is a free country. People can speak. They have the right to speak as they wish. We would only hope that when they do come forward, what they have to say is said with some, at least some sense of truth, and some supporting facts to go behind that, the statements. So being this is on the agenda, I have said it before, and I'm going to say it again, just as council, or as Mayor Stevens has said, I brought my 460 forms tonight. Here they are, clear back several years. Anyone can come and look at them. I know that they were looked at by Mr. Sheridan. And so that leads me to believe that the comments that he made on that June 7th, the 2010 meeting, he knew were false because he had seen my 460 forms. I have no, and we have to, by law, we have to turn these in, and it indicates on the 460 forms for the people in the community that don't understand this, where we, where the money came from donated, your personal account, whatever, the 460 forms is about your campaign committee. Anything, anyone that spends more than $1,000 on a campaign must send these forms in. Now, there's legal action if you can be, if it can be shown that you falsify these. And I certainly don't want to be in violation of the FPPC, so I'm going to put only what is absolutely correct here. Anyone can see my bank statements. I have all the bank statements. There was no time, there was a mention in Mr. Sheridan's comments several times about a $21,000 donation to the previous election campaign. Well, Mayor Stevens and myself were the only two that were up for election, along with the two incumbents. So that was directly directed totally to us. You can look at my forms, and I'm sure you can look at Ken's. There was not any part of a $21,000 that was contributed by Consolidated Disposal or anyone associated with Consolidated Disposal. And we have said that over and over. And yet, I guess, there's people in the community that feel if you keep lying, often enough, people will start believing the lies. It's interesting that we now have gone through, well, Mr. Sheridan made these statements, and he knew that Art DeBolt was or had already gone to the district attorney according to the statements, and there was no action taken by the district attorney. That was because there was no validity to anything that was reported there. And so the next step was this lawsuit that we are still in. And that was by Mr. Sheridan, Ken Parker, Catherine Driscoll, J.M. Iveler, Jerry, Graham Mahia, and led by Art DeBolt. As has been said, two of those actions, the ones referring to us, have been dismissed. It is sad, and Jerry is absolutely right. We can't control what is said at the podium, and we've all taken the brunt of accusations of things that were not very pleasant. But, and it's a sad day for our community when that happens. We have a great community. I don't think we would all continue to do this if we didn't think we had a great community. We need to get above and beyond this kind of thing because we need to show what's really good about Los Alamedos. And the good part of Los Alamedos so much outweighs this petty kind of thing. It was all done for political purposes for the 2010 campaign, and it really is a shame. The only thing that, from this, I would say is that I would request Brad Sheridan publicly apologize for the false statements he made about the majority, the council majority, and the statements that were made to this community. So having said that, that's about it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Going to move on to Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
You know, I really struggle with this item. I think with all the important things that we have going on in the city to kind of step backwards into this, I'm not 100% sure why this is on the agenda either. Councilmember Kuzimoto, I know that this was very important to you. You know, it would be helpful to me to get a better perspective of the rationale, what you're hoping to achieve from this action item.
Certainly, I'd be happy to address it at councilmember comments at the end if you want to hold it till then. Happy to address it.
Sure. So I've got a bunch of questions. I'm, you know, kind of going through, and I'll kind of talk about them, but without really having any of the answers to the questions, to me, this just appears like we're using our time to complete personal favors for our political allies. And I said, and, you know, so for me, you know, the item in question was something that was a night in June 2009. It was a, it was an event that took place in here. It was an event that took place with a lot of people talking about the trash contract. So the context for the community is, we were in a public hearing process for the trash contract. In this event, right going on at the same time, not all of us were up here on the council. Councilmember Kuzimoto was in the crowd, and he was also a speaker that night, Sheridan. Brad Sheridan and Warren went through, and in this, you know, we had comments that are documented pretty good in our staff report, but we also have events where they were holding up signs and going through the process, of which were a coordinated effort to make their point, which they have a right to do. So Councilmember Kuzimoto fully participated with Brad Sheridan in this activity. You know, the comments, and, you know, really, whether we're going to get into the detail of this as whether they're sanctions, it's interesting to me that the agenda item is "Subject: Council Discussion Regarding Potential Request for Sanctions Regarding Public Comments Made by Brad Sheridan." But the whole report talks about specifically the moves towards the, you know, his comments where he, you know, allegedly had threatened the district attorney, charges of whether we would be able to -- we would be able to be provided any form of an administrative support from the city if we were ever found guilty of any sort of corruption by the district attorney. It's interesting to me that if you look at the comments that he made, talking about the district attorney, and you go into our lawsuit with the city and Art, you know, Jerry, everybody, and you look at that and you see that Art DeBolt, in his declaration through that, says specifically, at the point in June when we started to have the negotiations with the trash contract, in his declaration says, "I immediately contacted the FBI and the district attorney and tried to pursue this on criminal terms." So then, you know, as you go later through this, you realize that Art DeBolt, the same guy that made the comments in his declaration, this is legal, this isn't me just saying what I think, this is what's in there. Art DeBolt is the biggest campaign donor to Warren, Jerry, and the slate, and Brad Sheridan. So you've got what looks to be a coordinated effort of a lot of people working together for one issue, which is the trash contract. So you go through that, you see that it's possible, I'm not saying it's for sure, but it's possible that when Brad got up and gave his speech, he knew that Art was actively working one angle, which was the district attorney, and thought that would come to fruition. So he wanted to be prophetic and say, hey, look, when this happens, something's coming down. It never happened. But, you know, what did end up happening is, two months later, those folks that we mentioned filed the lawsuit. The lawsuit that we're in right now specifically ties Art DeBolt and J.M., serving the city. It has declarations by Ken Parker, Kat Driscoll, Jerry Mejia, coming after the city. It has in there this whole process of Art DeBolt leading this thing, who's the number one fundraiser for Jerry Mejia, Warren Kuzumoto, Brad Sheridan. So it looks like, as Marilyn said, that, you know, this is a coordinated effort of seven people. And to me, if you take it in the context and you look at the staff report, and I ask the question, what do we want to get accomplished? All I could surmise is that we're using the dais like we used to in the olden days up through 2008 to fix problems for our friends. And I think that's wrong. I think that this is not the place to sort out and try and smooth over the problems in the past. We need to be looking and going ahead and go forward. So I think that putting, you know, agendizing this, having the city attorney take another look at it, you know, and then, you know, in hindsight, it's only entertaining to look at all of the comments that Brad Sheridan had made, and then you can kind of go through the six or seven salient points and see six or seven lies. Things that are very untrue. They're not true. There's no truth. It can't be valid. This isn't my opinion, because in hindsight, we've got 2020 vision. That's a fact. $21,000, nobody knows where that number came from. You know, the DA charged all these different things that he kind of goes through. There's nothing there. But again, I'll just scoot all the way back, which is, public comment is public comment. Everybody has a right to come in and speak and say whatever they want. I just think, again, I, like Marilyn, would love to see an apology from Brad Sheridan to the city, to the community, to the council members, just as Warren, Councilmember Kuzumoto, did when his first night up here on the city council. He came up and said, "Look, I want to know, Councilmember Edgar, do you support these things that were said about me? I want my honor and my dignity preserved." And I thought that was a reasonable request. And we went up and down, you know, he asked up and down the dais, what do you think? Are you, you know, do you think that these lies are true? We all said no. We were there for his honor, his integrity, because he is an honorable man. But when I see stuff like this, this really bothers me with all the stuff that we've got going in the city, you know, at this point with the economy. So, you know, again, I think that now we gotta look at the practical application of what do we want to achieve by the staff report? So a vote for receive and file is a vote for a smooth over. And I'm just not supportive of it. I don't think this thing should have came back. I don't think that we're here for the smooth over. I'm not sure what the objective was, other than to try and revive some friend's name and make sure that if anybody ever goes back to the public record to see, it's like, there was nothing there, so let's all go back to sleep. So, you know, for me, I guess I would go to just table this item indefinitely. I don't look to use the council to advocate or to vindicate my friends and family. And with that, those are my comments.
All right. Thank you. Are you making a motion of that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion of that.
And I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. And I'd like to make a point of clarification.
We all had, are we bringing it back to the council again to go around?
No, sir. I've already voted. I just want a point of clarification for the record. I'd like it noted for the record, if you don't mind. We're talking about lies that are being spread about certain council members up here, or at least that's the statement that's being addressed right now. Yet I have two councilmembers who are sitting to my right who have just said lies about me with regards to this case. So I think that if we want these things to go away, we need to stop the political games like they're saying. I don't know why this was brought forward. I thought it was just a housekeeping to clean it up. It had been brought up before, wanted some resolution to it, as we do many items that come before the city council. So I'm not sure if there's something more being read into this. I don't really know. It wasn't my item, but it's not, it's not, I don't have the perception that the others do. And I'd like that noted for the record.
All right. Thank you.
Then I haven't cast my vote yet, Mr. Mayor. So my vote is no on the motion by Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
All right. Thank you. And Councilmember Mejia has had a chance for a point of clarification. I would ask Councilmember Kuzumoto, do you also wish to make a point of clarification?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Well, this is the last time.
I have councilmember comments I can make.
All right. And Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Poe, do you have any points of clarification?
And I believe it's a three to two. I think it's the end of it.
All right. That's it. This is a three to vote. And completed. And we're going to move on to item number 9B. Could we please have a staff report on that?
This item was placed on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Kuzumoto. It refers to two upcoming conferences, the League of California Annual Conference, which this year is being held in San Francisco, and an upcoming Joint Powers Insurance Authority, California Joint Powers Insurance Authority forum, educational forum, which will be held in Indian Wells. That item, actually, the registration is free, I need to add, before I forget. In years past, over the past two years, we have not implemented a complete travel ban, and there have been occasional ventures to these forums, not the least of which is the League of California Cities, over which the last two years, myself and Councilmember Zarcos attended when it was out of town in San Jose. Last year, Councilmember Zarcos attended at his own expense. Travel-wise, the city paid the registration to vote on the league resolutions last year in San Diego. The items are on this agenda for a clarification and policy direction on whether the council chooses to have the league representative and/or anybody else on staff or council attend these conferences. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Kuzumoto.
So what I'm looking for as the appointed representative for the League of Cities, as well as the California JPIA, I'm looking for direction from my colleagues up here. I've blocked out the days off from my work, but I, I'll leave it to you whether you need me to be there or not, and I'll just leave it at that.
All right. We'll bring it back to the council. Now, you did say it was being paid for and reimbursed?
No.
Or not?
The travel expenses and the accommodations for these multiple-night conferences are not, definitely will be a cost. The registration for the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority is free. The league annual registration for the annual conferences, I believe, $595 this year.
All right. So the actual cost would be airfare and hotel?
We made an estimate in the staff recommendation. The total cost, we believe, for the league, and this is an outside cost, and includes meals and travel and stay, is...
Two hundred?
Twelve hundred.
I broke it out. I put them together. Actually, $1,200 per person for the league, and then nominal figure $500 herself for the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority.
All right. I personally think it's important that we follow through on these. And saying that, I'm gonna move it on to Councilmember Mejia.
If there's important information that we can gain from these, I think that's why we have the councilmembers sit on these commissions, that they have to be in attendance in order to be a part of that. So I would recommend that we do as we've done in the past and send a representative.
All right. Councilmember Kuzumoto, do you want any further comment on it?
So I guess, the one thing I guess I would like to see us do is, for the next meeting, to have agendized the topics of the League of Cities, so we can discuss, and then I can receive guidance on how to vote representing us, our city, okay?
Right. We received the league...
If I should go.
Yeah. I just, for clarification on that, we received the draft league resolutions late last week. And if there is a consensus that there will be a representative attending that, we will bring back the league resolutions to the next council meeting.
Thank you. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on to Councilmember Poe.
Thank you. I have kind of mixed feelings about this. It is important to go to these, to the league conference for some representation. But we have, three years ago, I believe now, we, I thought we made a policy that the, any expenditure for any trips or conferences would be paid for by the councilmember that was attending. We were trying to cut expenses, and we do have a balanced budget, and we are, we do have a little bit better control over our finances at this time. I think that I would certainly be in favor of having our representative to the insurance CJPIA conference. I would be in favor of that. That has a direct, I believe, a direct correlation to the residents in our community. This is a very important position, and Warren holds that position. So I really think that it's important for him to go to that and that we would pay for that. Because the insurance is directly for our city, and it's important for us to know everything to do, especially when we went into this JPIA a few years ago, and it was somewhat ill-advised afterwards. And now, it's still real, not real, real secure. We have, we had questions a few months ago about this, and Warren did go and cleared up some of that. So I think we really need to keep a handle on that. So it's important. As far as the league conference, I've been to several. I've been on the council for many years. I did not go every year. I've gone at times that we felt that it was important to have representation there. But given the economy and the funding available and so on, I think that attendance at any other conference should be done at the councilmember's expense. Yes, there is a lot that is learned at the League of Cities conference, but you pick and choose which session you want to go to. And I'm not so sure that all of those sessions are relevant to a small city like ours. So I would be fine for sending a representative to the insurance conference, but I would not be in favor of attendance at the League of Cities conference, unless it was on their own dime, as Councilmember Zarcos did before. The biggest expense is in the hotel and the flight. If a councilmember chooses to go, then we probably should pay for their registration. But as far as the rest of it, I think it should be on their dime.
Thank you. Moving on, Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Yeah. First of all, I wanted to thank Warren for bringing this item to our council's attention and to be able to talk through this. So thank you.
Yeah.
You know, we voted Warren to be our representative for the CJPIA, and he's done a great job. He's been focused on it. I think it's really important to stay connected to it. It's one of the biggest liabilities that we have on an ongoing basis on our financials that none of us like. And so, you know, if there's ways to learn a little bit more about it, it seems like a lot of people, I know in the Sand District, we're looking at risk management and how much you try to insure versus self-insure. And so there's a couple items that I'd be very interested to have a firsthand perspective. I think your idea of bringing back an agenda, at least of some of the topics that you found helpful, even if it's just one page, super high level, would be helpful.
Sure.
The League of Cities is, I have very similar feelings, probably as Marilyn, you know, and probably in the context of, you know, our budget for city council used to be about $105,000 a year. And, you know, we chopped that thing back to 50 to 60, and then back to 70. So it's been right around that, and a lot of that was travel. But, you know, if I would say there would be a justification part, we, you know, we do select one member of our council to be our voting member for the league, and so there is a vote that takes place in San Francisco. You know, I don't want to be critical of, does our vote matter? Because it's pretty leaning one way up there, but I think that it's important to be heard. So, you know, I would be supportive. I, you know, like I said, I think that Warren, when he goes through this thing, he diligently pursues an agenda. He looks for things. Maybe there's some stuff right now. I think that outsourcing some of the functions of cities, I think, is interesting to me. We're dealing with an issue coming up on our agenda. It has to do with our city clerk leaving. You know, we've asked, you know, to get insight from different councilmembers, and, you know, just for the community's sake, Warren's been very vocal in his perspective, and I like that. So I would have to say that for the League of Cities and the insurance conference, I'm supportive, but I guess something I don't see in your staff report is that you want to go. I see you got it blocked out. And if you, so let me just make an offer. If you don't want to go, we'll make it easy for you. But, or if you're tied up work-wise. But if you feel obligated because it's there, and because of your sense of obligation, you're putting it, saying, hey, do you guys want me to go? I would just say, I'm in the middle, and I could be here for you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It is, it is, I'm here to serve, and I want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And I hear what you're saying about the League of Cities. Perhaps if there is the one item for voting, I'd certainly, you know, look at taking a day trip up there if it's just a matter of casting our vote. But, you know, appreciate, you know, your comments. It's however you want, and I resonate with what Councilmember Poe says. I agree. I think it's maybe not a good, wise use of our funds, but I'm not experienced enough. That's why I look to you all to decide what's the best thing for us and our city. So, thank you.
So I guess, in the closing, my recommendation would be to go with staff recommendation at the discretion of Councilmember Kuzumoto and his choice. So that's the only caveat I'd add, because I think I'm on board with it.
All right.
Could I ask the question? Are you looking for us to set policy for the future or just for these two?
Just for these two. And, I mean, obviously, we've been sort of doing this the last couple of years. This is the way we've been sort of handling these things, bringing forward the conferences that seem to resonate and seem to matter. And this is no exception. They've come differently, but this is something that the council has considered throughout. As far as, I mean, I think I'm hearing a policy direction from the council on this, but, you know, we can go with however you want to do it.
All right.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
On the, on the new policy that we made, and I'm not sure if I remember it correctly. I know we went to a four, at least four councilmembers had to vote yes for a person to attend. I don't remember saying that they had to pay their own way. I think that's something that we initiated amongst ourselves, saying, in an attempt to save money, we would kind of make a pledge to pay our own way. But I don't know that that was made official. Can we check on that?
We can check.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comments?
Well, I, in this recommendation, I don't think we're asking Warren to pay his own way, right?
Correct.
No, no. But Marilyn had said she thought it might be part of the policy. I just didn't know. So I'm asking for clarification.
Okay.
All right. City manager will provide clarification on that, and I believe, is there a motion on this one?
I make the motion that we go with staff recommendation with the caveat of if Councilmember, at Councilmember Kuzumoto's discretion.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
With that said, I will bring back the league resolutions at the next council meeting. Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to item 9C, Resolution Number 2011-15, temporary... All right, we will now move on to item 9C, Resolution Number 2011-15, Temporary Designation of the City Clerk's Responsibilities to the City Manager, and Discussion of Options Regarding Selection and of a Permanent City Clerk. Can we have a staff report?
Yeah, let me start by saying, this is certainly not a power grab on my part, and I'll go with the direction of the council, however they want to go forward with this, but I also will say, in years past, when there has been a vacancy in the city clerk's office, temporarily, the city manager gets those duties, and temporarily, the city manager has brought back to council a contract form to fill in the interim. What I want to report out tonight is, in addition to the housekeeping of the resolution here, I want to report on the status of going forward, and we are looking seriously at contracting with a private firm and another local city as well, and for the short term at least, and potentially exploring whether or not there's a long-term solution, and that's trying to find a long-term savings. We have made some headway on that, and I expect that by next meeting, we can have a recommendation to move forward, working with Councilmember Kusamoto on that issue, and we've gone through a couple of meetings, and I'm going to ask him to go through one more sometime this week to look at that, and I hope to have a good range of options for the council to take direction on tonight. It would be appropriate if the council has a point of view regarding the contracting, whether it be short-term, medium-term, long-term, or not, and they don't want staff to go in that direction, or if they want us to move in one specific direction, otherwise, it'd be appropriate to speak up on that, but as far as the action that has to be taken tonight, what we're recommending is that the city council does appoint an interim clerk, and I'll have, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, when it comes down to this action, we're simply designating you in the interim until we have a chance to decide which direction we want to go.
Me, or whomever else you would choose to designate.
We pick you. And so, just a little clarification, so it's not going to change the fact that we possibly could end up with another city clerk?
No, and what would happen is, if there is an interim, I would, this would probably hold for a short time, but if there was a consensus of the council at some point to contract and appoint a contract city clerk, that's something else we'd have to discuss at a later date.
Which would go through the normal interview process by all of us, and-
We can do that however you'd like to do it, right.
Very good. All right, I'm going to bring it back to Councilmember Mahia.
I have no questions.
All right, we're going to move on to Councilmember Kusamoto.
I have no questions either, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Councilmember Poe.
I guess I do have a couple of questions. You, I have no problem, we had, oh, okay, here's my first question. By our code, or by our charter and so on, we must have a designated city clerk?
Correct.
All right. And it can be our city, it can be our city manager?
It can be whomever you choose.
Whomever we choose, all right. And certainly, it needs to be somebody that knows how to do these 460 and 700 forms.
Right.
So, and you are, I'm, so I have no problem with adopting that resolution. Discussion of options regarding selection of a permanent city clerk, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. Could you tell us a little bit more about the difference between us selecting a city clerk and us contracting for this?
Well, there's several ways to do it. I think the traditional path is to put out a flyer, take applications, and then the council would interview for a city clerk and appoint a city clerk, and that's what's been done almost every time passed, that I'm aware of. What we're looking for here is, we're seeing an opportunity, perhaps, if we can work out a contract arrangement with either a private sector entity or another public sector entity, and not have to pay out the costs of benefits, retirements, et cetera, there may be a cost savings here. It might be an appropriate time to look at getting the work done that the city clerk's office needs to get done, and the city clerk's office is a busy one, and perhaps saving some money. So, truthfully, at this moment, I can't tell you that we found that. I'm looking at it consistently, and I'm hoping to have some numbers pretty soon, and we'll have a better gauge of that sometime in the next week or so, but that's something that I think is worthwhile to explore, and I'm just looking, I'm really not looking for additional direction from the council unless they have any heartache with me looking into those different alternatives.
Right. Now, if we were to contract, would that company, or would it be, would it be so that we would have the same person from the other city or that company?
Preferably, yes. You know, you lose a little bit of control on that, but this is a community that likes to come in and see faces at the counter that they recognize, we are aware of that, and preferably, we'd like to have a consistency in the staffing, whether it be three days a week, four days a week, or whatever we decide to do on this. And also, we have a vacant halftime position, which we've not filled yet, that would help supplement that, theoretically, as we move forward. So, yes, in short answer, we're looking for, in the ideal world, I'd like to see that sort of consistency.
So it would be a person that would get to know-
The community and how it works.
The community and so on, okay. It's unfortunate that we, we had a young lady here for, what, how long? A year?
About a year and a half.
Yeah. And she left, and the circumstances were unfortunate. I guess I'll just leave it at that. I guess for right now, that's, that's all I have, but I'd like to be able to comment further later.
All right. All right, we're going to move it on to Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
So, a little bit for the community, because I think this one, to me, is an important one. So, the council has three director reports. We have a city clerk, we have a city manager, and we've got the city attorney. So, you know, at this point, the city clerk's office is one city clerk and two part-time people, so it's two equivalent halves, but it's, the person that we're responsible for in this governance model is, that city clerk is our person. So, a lot of people ask, you know, hey, how come you guys get involved with Todd with, as a fire chief, or a police chief? Todd actually works for Jeff, he doesn't work directly for us. Angie doesn't work for us, she works for Jeff, and so, as a matter of principle on the council, I've always tried to manage through the three people that we're responsible to manage, and let the city run without getting in and micromanaging it. But when we have an issue with a city clerk leaving, then I think as a governing body, we need to step back and ask, well, what happened? Because it's an important role. So a lot of people ask me in the community, well, what's a city clerk do? You know, three main functions from my perspective. You know, first and foremost, they are here to record the meeting minutes and make sure that the meeting is documented correctly. The second is they conduct the elections, you know, to make sure that the elections go, is, you know, the filing, the process of collecting all the campaign account information, interacting with the county clerk. And then the third thing is that they go through, and they are the official jurisdiction for correspondence for our city. You know, people, you know, go through and they drop something off at the clerk. So, you know, when we look at this, I think, you know, we need to kind of take a look at this and say, you know, we need to use this, and we can excuse it and say, hey, she was here for a year and a half, and she's a good gal, and she moved on. Or we can sit back and have an honest discussion with the community and say, look, we need to make sure, whenever somebody of one of our key staff leaves, you know, we don't know if it's just, you know, an anomaly, or a beginning of a trend for turnover. And when I came in and was elected in 2006, our city had a tremendous turnover. We'd went through seven city managers, we had 25 people at our level, turnover multiple times within a three-to-four-year period. So, something very important to me is stability in the city. All of that being said, you know, I think that when we look at the city clerk leaving, and we try to analyze, well, what happened, as Marilyn had said, you know, when she left, it was unfortunate. You know, Richard Murphy came up here during the public comments, and he made a comment, why can't you guys just get these meeting minutes passed? Right? That was a data point. You know, how many times have we went through the meeting minutes to reject them, to send them back? Eventually, we tried to help by making a policy to keep them in action minutes, because we were grinding through the city clerk, because she couldn't get meeting minutes done, because some people want everything recorded, and some people just want the minimum, and the clerk is the job that gets in the middle and has to try and find a way to keep everybody happy, and that process adds a tremendous amount of time to her job that she had. And what was happening is, we would have meeting minutes coming back two, three, four times until we could iron them out. Even today, when we pass the meeting minutes, we have on our council a focus that, you know, by standard, by principle, we won't pass, you know, one person on our council will not pass the meeting minutes because they don't meet our expectation. You know, my only point to the community is, you know, when we put somebody in that position, and we are debating over meeting minutes on and on again, eventually, there becomes a little bit of a tug-of-war with that job. And there's a lot of people in the community that have seen that tug-of-war manifest itself into her being told publicly, be quiet, listen to me, you work for me. Those types of things on that type of an employee over time has a significant impact. So I just want to make sure that we are honest with ourselves as a council, that we hold some responsibility for one of our three people leaving. We need to be able to provide a workplace that is conducive, supportive, that we get behind, that we actually, you know, go through. If we think that we have problems, we need to handle them and take them on and provide a very professional environment. I don't think we did a good job at that, on this item, and I think that when I look at this designation for the city clerk, you know, now if I'm going to look forward, it's one job plus two part-time people, I think if we're going to look at that and try to get the most out of it, it's hard to find a person within the salary range that could come in and be an employee that's not so junior that when they get here in that seat, that they don't get the stuff kicked out of them, because it's a tough job. And, you know, you're sitting there trying to kind of please everybody, and eventually, you're not going to please anybody. An example of this, if you look at the meeting minutes in the agenda, you have one meeting minute for the June 6 special meeting, the meeting minutes, 10 pages of notes. You go in, as Jerry had said, to a later, I think, item number six in the meeting minutes, you know, barely a half a page of notes. So you can see confusion in that function, still, up to the day she left and submitted those things in ghostwriter style, she was still conflicted. We haven't fixed this problem. To Richard Murphy's point, this is a policy issue, and we've tried to appoint a policy in this and say, look, from now on, we just want action minutes. But you've almost got transcripts in our agenda item. I would beg that the council, that we step back and look at this, that we try to look for how we conduct ourselves up here, because I don't want to have us have another person come through for a year and a half in that field where the job usually is two to three years to be able to conduct and be able to get it on your resume as a legitimate experience. This was a job where she reported directly to elected, not to the city manager. So, you know, unfortunately, my perspective is, I think that the city clerk ends up going without getting the most out of the opportunity that she had here in Los Alamos, and that's adamantly what I was against. I did not want to have that type of environment, and, like I said, I just think that all of us up here, including myself, we take responsibility to the community that we won't conduct our business like this, and I think we need to try harder in the future and make this a better environment so that we don't have another person turnover in that job. I'd be very supportive of Warren or Councilmember Kusamoto continuing to work with the city manager to interview and look at options to get that kind of an ad hoc support for us, he's done a great job up to this point. I will tell you that, you know, one of the options that they're looking at is potentially one of the council member, or one of the clerks, or the clerk of the city of Long Beach, and one of their council members contacted me and started talking to me about how great this person was. So it was kind of interesting, they're interested in job sharing, it's very similar to what we try to do with the police, is they would like to try and get some of the burden of their cost basis off. The only difference is, Los Alamos is open for business, and that we really want to be able to try to find creative solutions and maintain the integrity of our staff and the perception to the community that we'll be able to provide continued service. So with that, I, you know, I would go with the staff recommendation here, and I have no further comments, thank you.
All right, we're going to bring it back to the council again for final comments on this. I, I'll be honest with you, it was tragic whenever we lost her, because we've had a very low turnover to nonexistent turnover over the past three years, and for us to lose an employee that I thought was excellent, no matter what the circumstances, it's something that we all take very hard, and we take it very serious. And again, I don't want us to fall into that same mistake on any kind of replacement that we bring in. And again, the confusion when it came back to the minutes. We simply have action minutes, nothing particular for anyone else, and so, action minutes is something that we have to stick to. If anyone wants to have a more in-depth review, all of the tapes are available, and people can have access to that. So I also support the reaching out to the other cities to see if we can join together and help each other in this replacement, or two- or three-day-a-week city clerk position. And I think as time goes on, you're going to see more cities reaching out to each other for shared expenses, and it's something that we tried six months ago, working with some of the other communities around us, with the idea of sharing the cost. Well, you know what? For political reasons, a lot of the other communities turned around and said, no, no. Well, I've got news for you. Whenever you have a chance to review their budgets, they may be the first ones coming back to us and say, well, maybe we should think about consolidating some of our services to help each other defer cost and still provide what our residents need. So, anything we can do with the city of Long Beach to be able to do this, I also am in favor of that, and I would also like to thank Councilmember Kusamoto for working on that with you also. All right, going to move on to Councilmember Mahia.
I, I think I've already listened to what the council's had to say. I do feel that in the past, there have been many people who work for the city who have felt maybe what's being presented here tonight with the clerks, so maybe we need to look into a team building or something like that, so that we can be more effective at the jobs that we do up here, and that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kusamoto?
I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Poe?
Thank you. I think that, at this point, and I have already stated this, that we should go with trying to get a contract out. I'm, I know that in the circles of the city clerks, there's a lot of rumors, and I fear that we probably have a bit of a reputation right now, and may find it difficult to find someone that would, that would even want to come here until we can get our act together and our ducks in a row. So maybe, I think contracting is the best way to go, and I think we, we really need to, it's too bad because our clerk was trying to please everyone, and we did have a policy of action minutes, and it should, it should stay that way. That's a policy that we voted on, we discussed it at great length several months ago, and so, we just need to move forward with that. So I, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
All right.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No. All right, moving on to the last item 10, Mayor and City Council Initiated Business. We will go on rotation on this, that puts me at first. One of the things that I did was I went to the Budget and Finance Committee for the Orange County Fire Authority, and again, simply concentrating on how to reduce the, and get accurate accounting for a lot of the retirement and pension costs that are involved with pretty much all of the public agencies. And so this is going to be an ongoing effort from the Orange County Fire Authority, and probably any other public agencies that we have out there too, right now. We're meeting more and more often on it. Another reminder for the community, we have Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and they will be having a golf tournament that will be September 26, 2011, and if you've ever had anyone in your family get hurt or die from an accident with a drunk driver, this is something that I hold near and dear to my heart because it happened to me. And so, I do recommend that you get ahold of MAD, and you can get them online, and get involved with Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and so we can get the word out in the community and help support this event. And this event again is September 26th. And that will be on a Monday and it's going to be at the Oak Creek Golf Club in Irvine. One of the people to contact on this or the contact director's phone number is 714-296-8360. And get involved. I mean, these are great things to get involved, just like our Cancer Society and the involvement that we do in these. It's going to affect everybody at one time or another. And so please take the time to make the time to get involved. Comment was made earlier and I think we'll have a few more comments about one of the items that we had on the agenda that being in public service or in politics, I'm trying to decide which one it was, is not for the faint of heart. Trust me, I'm not faint at heart. But it's easy for someone like me to look at what's going on and saying, "It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong." And so that's not being faint at heart. And so I just believe that as public service, we were put up here to do what's right for the community, to always deal with truth and the transparency and the trust that goes along with it. Things in the past didn't look that way. And along with that, I just wanted the message sent back to the community that everything that we've done up here has been correct, whatever the motives were that anyone else might have used to cast doubt on the city council that was up here. It was hurtful. It was wrong. And not the right message because as the attorney stated, nothing was, nothing was behind any of those accusations that were made. But I think a stronger message is, what kind of a message are we sending to our children? You know, how do we want our children to act? And so by doing the right thing up here 100% of the time, by being ethical, by always dealing with the truth that's involved in it, by vetting out every situation, I'm hoping that the message that we're sending back to all of our young people, all of our children in the community, that it's not okay to scream, yell, and make accusations. It's better just to make sure you're right and do things correctly. That's it for me. Moving on, we're going to go on to Councilmember Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I'd like to address what you had just said. I think that you took my words as though they were directed to you or other council members and that was not my intention. So if you were injured by those, I apologize. That was not my intent. It was just kind of a saying that all of us have had to go through difficult times. So no, nothing directed at anybody here on the council, just really, truly a statement of fact. I'd like to congratulate Shelley. She's moving on from the News Enterprise to OC Breeze and I just want to wish her the best. And then I'd like to ask, who do we use for our signal maintenance in town?
Computer service company.
Computer service. Thank you, Tony. I was wondering, I know we've addressed the light over on Humboldt and the box has been extended, but I'm wondering, what's the timeframe that we're looking to put a permanent light in there and get rid of all that box? I'm just concerned, we've got kids going up and down that street and they like to jump off things and I would hate to have one of them injure themselves.
Councilmember, that'll be out to bid shortly, within the next two weeks. It's part of the five-in-one project that is now becoming the six-in-one project. Various concrete improvements as well as that signal.
Well, and I'm glad you said that because there is a part where the concrete on the access ramp has sunk and it also looks like it might be a trip hazard. So thank you so much for always being on top of these things. I really appreciate it and I'll make sure I get the, those comments back to the people who asked me about them. Also, I guess, Tony, this would be for you. I know we've had graffiti throughout town. It's not horrible, but it is there. And I've noticed that we paint over it. Can you tell me just, because I know some people who are in an anti-graffiti type business, that it's not much more time to remove the graffiti as opposed to paint over it? Can you comment on that? And is there any way that we might maybe bring back to the council a way to give Public Works enough time or the support instead of having this patchwork all over town that just looks really tacky? If we could give them whatever tools they need, and I'm not talking about a graffiti removal, but maybe a process that they could go to, to not have that paint be all over town. Do you know, would you like to comment?
Sure. Our graffiti removal, the way we attack it is, we have certain chemicals that remove it from the wall. That's our first go-around. They're green chemicals. We try to save the environment as well.
Good.
If that doesn't work, then we go to the second option of pressure washing.
Okay.
If the pressure washing doesn't work, our third option is to paint over it.
Okay.
With that in mind, if you see some patchwork, one of the most common spots is the bridge over by the Los Alamos High School. We've tried a whole number of chemicals, a whole number of preventative paints out there and we're open to anything that'll work.
Sure.
And my office can be reached if anybody in the community has any suggestions. But we try to do our best with that.
Oh, you do a great job. I was just wondering if there was a way we could make it look better for our community. What I noticed is mostly on the signal poles, there's lots of painting. Now, is that surface harder to remove paint from or graffiti from than say a wall that's, you know, texture coated?
It's harder to match the color. And that's typically because of the years of operation that the pole has been in there. You know, as time goes on, paint fades.
Sure.
And it's hard to match the faded paint. So we try to match it as best as we can.
Sure. And you've done a good job, but is there a way, instead of painting over, what I'm asking, are the poles more difficult to remove the graffiti from than say a wall that's texture coated?
Definitely.
They are. Okay, great. Maybe you and I can sit and talk because I'd like to learn more about that.
Yeah, there's another method too. Another city has had a tremendous graffiti problem. And one way we solve that on the poles and the signal boxes, which are primary targets, mostly for felt markers and small paint and stuff, we develop a uniform cover for the signal boxes, color.
Sure.
Paint color. We just paint everything that color.
Well, and that's what, that's what I was going to say is, even if we only paint it up to a certain height where maybe no one else could reach, then when we come in and we paint it, it's all the same color and it doesn't look like that patchwork.
And that's fairly easy to do. I noticed we haven't done that and that's a blessing. We haven't done it because we haven't had the problem that requires it.
Right.
But if it is becoming more of an issue, the way to do it is just to standardize a very, a very cheap color to mix and just go for it, something that's, and usually a pale green or something is what most people use, but we can do that, right, Tony?
Sure, cancer.
Sure. So I just, I know that they say that when you start to see graffiti in town, you know, in any town, it's not a good sign. And so that's the only reason I bring it up is because I want to make sure that we keep the community safe as possible. The access ramps that are going to be finished by summer, are we on schedule for that over in Carrier Row?
That's also part of the five-in-one slash six-in-one project.
So we are on, we are on schedule for summer. Okay, great. And then the last thing I'd like to say is that, you know, personally with my family, our prayers go out to the family who lost loved ones in the service of our country. And I just wanted to say how very sad we were to hear about the loss of the members of our brave Navy SEALs team after the actions they took to protect our country. And I just wanted to say that as for my family and I, we just want to extend our condolences and tell you how very sad we are for your loss and that you're in our prayers. And with that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Kuzimoto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so where to start? I'll report that I did meet with the city manager and city clerk and his staff familiar by city to just look at a potential model that which we might look at, buying city clerk services by the pound. And it was very exciting, some of the things that they offer, some of the tools that they have. And I'm looking forward to another go-around with the city manager to see how we might craft something to bring back to this body to look at and, you know, address questions and concerns that you might have on that. So I'm thinking there's a way that we can get services that I think are going to be cost-effective. Let's see. Also want to mention that with respect to the Navy SEALs that were killed in Afghanistan, do want to give a shout-out to Sergeant Joseph Brito who was stood on the corner over here at the Shell Station. I think, I understand, on the order of 10 hours waving the American flag and drawing in passerby's. I received a call from Councilmember Graham Mejia that he was out there. I stopped by for a brief moment just to shake his hand and tell him thanks. And this is towards the end of the day in the evening around 6:00 PM. So he'd been out there all day as a one-man rally and tribute to the Navy SEALs. So again, thanks, Master Sergeant Joseph Brito. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. With respect to my, as I said two weeks ago in our meeting, my reasoning for the bringing this Brad Sheridan Ethics Investigation back and perhaps in the timing, Mayor Protem Edgar, I think you give me too much credit for being smart and I'm not that smart. The reason I brought it back this time, it's been a year. It's been a year and I spoke up on July 6, 2010, of which the council, and I'd asked the council not to take the action that was agendized at that time to remove this person from an appointed position. And then I think that action by itself was certainly the choice of the council, the council at the time, there's, you know, that goes with the job the appointed commission serve at the pleasure of the council. I think where it started getting a bit uncomfortable for me is the next step about possibly looking into ethics violation by a member of the community who got up there and spoke as, excuse me, spoke as an individual, not as a lawyer, not as a lawyer representing anybody, not as a member of the court. And then it kind of went a little bit further than that. So Mayor Protem Edgar, you yourself said you wanted to see this investigated a little bit further. If I recall, your words to the effect, you're not well-versed in these matters in terms of ethics with respect to members of the bar and you wanted to see it investigated further. And that was, I believe, on July 6, 2010. Two weeks ago, Councilmember Poe, you had explained that you were glad that this was brought back here and reopened and you wanted to see it closed and resolved. So your comments tonight, that why was it brought back and why is it still on the agenda? I kind of leave it back to you, to Mayor Stevens and Mayor Protem Edgar. I wanted it closed. I think it was a sufficient report that says this man did nothing wrong. He did nothing that required a letter off to the California Bar investigating his ethical conduct. And tried to argue that, you know, I think it was sufficient information. So the fact that it's on tonight's agenda is because we couldn't close it two weeks ago. And I believe the direction, and we can go look at the minutes, was to send it back to city staff and have a further review and explain to the council here as to what's going on. So that is in a nutshell what I'm doing. Is it political payback? I don't think so. I don't look at much in terms of Mr. Sheridan helping me politically. I'm not that politically ambitious. Is it a favor for a friend? Perhaps. You know, I can say that. But I would hope that someone would do that for me. I would hope that someone would do that for you if you're wrongly accused. Okay. So simply put, that's my motivations, not part of some conspiracy. I don't talk to the plaintiffs involved with that lawsuit. And of course, being on this side of the lawsuit and in closed session, I say nothing to anybody. It stays all within closed session as we're supposed to and just leave it at that. Okay. Finally, I want to recognize some recent Eagle Scouts who've contacted me and I know these fine young men personally. I just want to have their names written to the record, recent wardies of the highest rank of Boy Scouts of America. We have Stephen Castro, William Chenoweth, Brian Joseph, and Joseph Paulson. And I'll, Janice, I'll email the names to you so you can get the spelling. Okay? And they, I believe, the three of them had their Court of Honor last, or yesterday. I was unable to make it. And I believe Mr. Paulson will have his this coming weekend. I won't be able to make it as well, unfortunately. But I do want to recognize these men from Troop 642. I got to see them grow up from the time they were in first grade and I tell you, it's been a real privilege to watch them grow and develop. And with that said, back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go on to Councilmember Poe.
Thank you. First off, I would like to comment on the Park and Recreation Commission agenda. I thought, I want to congratulate you, Angie, on the commission orientation. We had several new commissioners and they were given an orientation about parks and recreation and what it is to be on that commission. And I, looking through it, I thought, gee, this is, it was wonderful. It was great. So it was good to look through it myself, coming from that commission, how things have changed over the years, the several years that I was, before that I was on that. Anyway, congratulations on a very good report. Thank you. I would like to comment to Warren about Troop 642. How great. Many of us as council members have the honor to be invited to some of these Eagle Scout ceremonies. And it's wonderful because these boys just do a fantastic job. And to have been able to be associated with that group and watch them go through, that has to be especially pleasing to you. So congratulations to those boys. I would also like to remind everyone, I cannot believe that we were getting to the end of summer vacation. How, it just went by in a flash. Believe it. So some kids, by the time we have another council meeting, some of the children in our community will have gone back to school. So, you know, as we're driving out in the morning on the way that they go to school and on the way when they're coming home, we have to be a little bit more careful for the ones that are on bikes and so on and so forth. And I hope all the children in this community had a really good summer. I will be attending tomorrow afternoon with our Chief of Police and our City Manager, the Westcom meeting at 4:30. It's kind of moved.
They moved it.
Differently so that now we're going to the meeting, before we were going to the meeting before so I could report on the meeting after. And now it's kind of turned.
It'll change again after next, well, the next quarter, you should be able to report after because we have the gap, right?
Okay. So I'll report out on that meeting at our next meeting. I would like to know, have we had the, they're not called speed bumps, but the little blips or something in the alley? Have those been installed?
They have not been installed. They are on order.
Oh, okay. Because I was, I think we all want to know, as soon as there's some kind of a report that can be given back to that, you know, we want to know what, if it has had any effect on the speed going up and down the alley. So we're looking forward to that. And lastly, I would like to comment on picnic at the Plaza. That is the food trucks that go to the parking area of the U.S. Bank on Cotella and Pine on Thursday evening, starting about 5:30. This began in May of this year and it is just getting bigger and bigger every week. I think we had 12 trucks. And there had been a small article in the Register that there was only going to be two or three remaining. But I contacted Wendy Watson, who is in charge of the trucks, and Chris Peely, who was the instigator of this entire thing. And they say, "Oh, no. We want to, it's so successful that we want to just keep going as long as the community wants it and until the rain comes."
Yeah, we were just on the short, thinking that through and I had a brief conversation with Chris Peely is that at least through daylight savings time, it seems to be having legs and we kind of want to see where it goes there. And, you know, it's one of those things, you don't want to wear it out, so you don't want to do too much, but.
Exactly. And I think the community and the weather will let us know when to stop it.
Right.
That's all right.
She's new.
Janice is going to stop it right now.
Anyway, it is, for anyone that hasn't come, it is absolutely so fun. You see so many people in the community that you don't see on a regular basis. It's kind of like old homewake. And we're going to try to start adding a few things to the evening in terms of a couple of other types of vendor booths, arts and crafts, and maybe some art vendors and so on, just to add a little bit punch to it. And we're talking about having some things that are, you know, maybe a little Halloween contest, you know, with the costumes and I'd like to see it go clear through, just keep on going. I can envision a Christmas tree out there. So, we'll see. It may, you know, you've got. It may, you know, you've got outdoor heaters, you can, we live in California, come on, you know. So, for anyone that hasn't come, it starts at about 5:30, and it usually winds up right around 9:00, and it's just really a lot of fun. It's a real community event.
Corner of Pine and Cotella.
Pardon?
Cotella and Pine.
Isn't that what I said?
Well, maybe you did, and I missed it. Just a reminder.
Oh, Cotella, yeah, okay. Cotella and Pine, yes. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you. Bringing it back to Mayor Protem Edgar.
Okay. I'm going to start by not correcting Maryland's street names, because I don't think you can be stumped on the streets, so.
Well, I, did I say the wrong name?
No, no, I, maybe I just missed it. I didn't hear you say it. I wasn't correcting you.
But I could, because, you know, I get excited about things and I say the wrong thing.
A couple of things I want to report. So, over the weekend, I had an opportunity for the Orange County Sanitation District to go to their CASA conference, which is a very sexy, thrilling conference on sanitation districts. So, everything you want to know about the stuff, we've got to talk about it. So, I brought a pamphlet in with the agenda, but there's four agenda items that I was really focused on. They had a session on what they called WOTUS, or WOTUS, which is the water of the US, and it has to do with jurisdiction issues that the Supreme Court's handing down on. So, if we spill water into, or if we spill stuff into potentially a ditch that, you know, goes into a tributary that goes into a wetland, you know, how susceptible are we from a liability perspective? So, it was fun issues like that. The other one was special districts consolidation. You know, there's a tremendous number of special districts. All of these sanitation districts are special districts, as like the Rossmore Community Services District. But they were formed in a time when, to serve a different purpose, so there's a lot of look right now for special district funding. How do they get funds? Do the districts need to self-sustain or consolidate? So, that's an industry direction. We looked at air quality management standards. If anybody's been to Fountain Valley off of Euclid by the Santa Ana River Channel, I think you'd have a real appreciation for the air quality management standards and the amount of chemicals that we have to use to keep the smell down. 2012 restructuring and streamlining project, I'm very proud. Our sand district had put in for a project. Basically, we, you know, our leadership team on the sand district have been, we completely restructured the sand district to eliminate some levels of management, and we utilized a working group of 30 people within the districts and the high potential list, people that potentially had a future to be in leadership jobs, all the way from the lowest level to second in command, and had them give us what they thought was the best layout for the future of that district. And then, from that, we put a plan in place and executed a big portion of that. So, they really had a say in their future, and the restructuring went great. And now, all of this is in preparations for the potential rate increase that would happen two years out, trying to get the, to a lean organization. You know, as we've talked about before, we've tried to restructure the debt for, you know, $400 million of debt that we have, using the AAA rating, unlike the US at an AA+. And so, we're doing everything we can. I just wanted to report out that that was a great time. I've got a bunch of information here. All of that, too, and the objective is, right now, as we've talked about, I'm the vice chair for the Orange County Sand District, so next year, I'm supposed to be the chair. They've asked me to go to these to start to meet people in the industry so that I can understand a little bit more some of the regional issues outside of just what we do. Second item, the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. Tomorrow, we have a meeting on our pocket park over there on the Coyote Creek. Jeff, I was just curious if you can give us, you or anybody, just real quickly, what we expect to achieve tomorrow so that.
We're just, it's deadlines and looking at deadlines. We have the, I'm hoping, the real, the big thing now is to get the comments back from Edison on the 100% plans that were submitted, and we've not received comments back. I'm working with you now, getting those back as soon as possible. Once the comments are back, we will get a final lease from Edison, which better mirror the lease that we've approved and that we've looked at, and we'll sign that, execute that, ship the package out to the CPUC. But that's where the 100% of the focus is right now.
Yeah. I got to say, the city manager's done a really good job on this one. I, it was painful at the beginning, I think, and, you know, he's done a great job, Dave Hunt, everybody that's been involved with this, I really appreciate it. And just so the council knows, we're doing what you guys told us to do, is to try and get this thing done. I got to tell you, though, if Jeff's trying to be nice, but if the CPUC package isn't submitted coming up here in the next 30 days, we.
Won't be submitted.
Yeah, we'll have a challenge, and it won't be for the lack of us trying. But again, I'm going to bring it back if we have problems to see if you guys can help. Some of you, including you, Jerry, have offered to kind of clear some paths, but I don't think we're out of it yet. In the Greenbrook District over there by the high school, Jeff, could you, for the public's consumption, some of us weren't lucky enough to have a 100-foot pine tree in our front yard in the right-of-way that's, looks like it's potentially getting removed. A lot of people are asking me the details. I knew that we were looking at that. I've been out of town. When I came back in, I seen a lot of sidewalk torn up. Can we just get a quick statement on that?
And fortunately, Tony's here tonight. He's going to help me out here. But what happened was, we had, one of the addresses on Greenbrook had large pine trees and two jacarandas, and there was a problem with the sidewalk going up. The resident concern was that if we root-prune the tree, it'd be exposed to storms and prevailing winds to fall on soggy ground. So, what we wanted was an arborist report on the two pine trees, because they're the largest and could cause most damage, and to look again at the jacarandas. And Tony has understood that the pine trees are staying, but the jacarandas are gone, correct?
That's correct.
And that's where, so we were lucky in that we found, the arborist report said that the root pruning would succeed. We can fix the sidewalk, and indeed, the pine trees, fortunately, are not the problem, but the jacaranda trees, depending on your view on jacaranda trees, were the problem. So, those did come out. And we did the proper notifications to the neighbors and everything on that.
So, right now, with all the sidewalks torn up, when do we think that we'll either pull trees and patch the concrete or, are all, where the concrete is taken out, are all those trees going down then?
I know. Right now, the trees that are being removed have been removed. The root pruning has been completed, and we are currently, right now, forming for new sidewalk. We're having to jump through two projects right now. We're also doing the Orville Lewis Fence, and the guys are down working on pouring concrete there the next two days. So, as soon as that's completed, we jump back to Greenbrook and finish up the sidewalks that we've torn up.
Okay, great. And, you know, on the graffiti item that was brought up, I, you know, I run that river canal, and I think you guys, like Jerry said, I think you guys are doing a great job of keeping, you know, I've been seeing it get tagged lately down there, and you guys seem to be right on it. That's the only place where I've been noticing a lot of graffiti, kind of an uptick there. And I think it's just people, or students maybe, or kids maybe bored during the summer, and they're getting down there, because I see kids hanging out in the ditch and doing all that stuff, too. So, I also wanted to say that my condolences go out to the folks in SEAL Team Six. When I was in the Navy, I was stationed for a short period of time at the Naval Station in Long Beach. I had an opportunity, I was on an administrative assignment, getting ready to go to Pearl Harbor with them. And then, when I was in Pearl Harbor, I actually served on a submarine that was a Special Forces sub. So, we actually had a contingent of the SEAL Team Six folks with us on the sub. These guys have such a heart, they, I mean, they are so dedicated to everything that they do, and, you know, as everybody is that's in the service. But I think that it just had a very special place in my heart to see, you know, these guys are heroes a month and a half ago during the Obama, or the Osama issue, and now that, you know, they unfortunately met their fate. That comes with their job, but, you know, I think as a community, I think are, you know, very focused on the military. I think that we're very sensitive to this and condolences to them. Shelley Henderson, I just wanted to tell her that we really appreciated her coverage of the city through the News Enterprise. We wish her the best of luck in her new OC Breeze assignment. I'm not really sure what that means, as she moves upstairs and continues to be here, so I'm thinking that's just a change of venue, but I'm hoping the News Enterprise, who suffered a significant amount of turnover lately, is, I don't know if they're associated with the OC Breeze or what, but hopefully, you know, they'll find some more good people to help them out. I wanted to provide a really quick update on redistricting. Today was a very, very important day for redistricting. As we've been talking about on the city council, there's been a citizens recommissioning for redistricting that was basically citizens putting together the new districts for, after the census in 2010. So, today, August 15th, they had their final meeting, and they basically acknowledged and affirmed their maps that they released a couple of weeks ago. So, what happened with Los Alamos? So, within Los Alamos, you know, we've been really focused on looking at the Assembly, the Senate, and the Congressional District. And I think in general, I think we've been fairly successful. You know, it's interesting is that the city council up here, not just me, but, I mean, all of us, we've been very focused on this, and we started writing letters early. We started writing letters after the first drafts were released. We've probably wrote city manager, I'd say, four to six letters. We've gotten the city, or the Chamber of Commerce to write letters. We've gotten business owners. So, you can go up on the webpage for wedrawthe lines.org and see everybody's public comment. Last week, about a week and a half ago, I seen Cypress put a call-out, "Everybody write letters. We don't like these districts." And I'm thinking to myself, kind of late on that. So, I think, again, it showed from a Los Alamos perspective that we were very focused on what was coming. Within the Assembly District, some of the things that we lobbied for, and on the Senate District that I think that we were successful, is that we tried to make this an Orange County only district. We didn't want to spill over and/or have our city split in half. On the Assembly side, we got Los Alamos, we got Rossmore SEAL, and interesting, we got half of Huntington Beach, meaning we didn't get the entire half of Huntington Beach. And, you know, for 20 years, this district's been governed by people coming up through the Huntington Beach School District Boards and the city council to be our Assembly person and to be focused on representation of our district from a Huntington Beach perspective. And they've done a great job. But I think what this does is it now extends out to Westminster, Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, and it allows us to get a little bit different perspective, possibly. On the Senate side, it's also Orange County only, but it includes Los Alamos, the highest northern part, and then dips down into SEAL across Rossmore, down to half of Huntington Beach, and cuts out towards Riverside, ending up in about the Orange District. So, again, you remember, they had really two big goals, contiguous borders, and so I think we did good. We're not into LA County on those two. And communities of interest, and I think that, you know, again, I think we did okay. I do, on the Senate side, it does look like, I'm sorry, on the Assembly side, we did get separated from Cypress. On the Congressional District, CD 47 that was released today, this one we didn't do probably as well as we would have hoped to be able to do. So, they redistrict, set the number on that to be CD 47, which is Congressional District 47, which will be Orange County and LA. You know, 43% of that district is in Orange County, and the rest is Long Beach. But it also, within Orange County, includes Cypress, Stanton, Garden Grove, and Westminster. And what's interesting is, today I had an opportunity, after the final heading was out, Congressman Royce called. He's, you know, I've been trying to help him, because he's kind of in a really tough situation. His district got moved up to be consolidated, and so he's in a real challenge. But, you know, I think that if people are paying attention to the redistricting, a lot of people are going to ask, well, what are some of the actions that can happen now? What's next? So, something that was passed when the Congressional, or when the districts were put up to be redistrict, they put a, what they call a kind of a quick pass, so that any legal challenge to these districts that gets filed will get fast-tracked to the Supreme Court of California. And from there, the Supreme Court of California will basically have the ability to affirm the decision of the commission or to provide a remedy. And so, at that point, not a lot of citizen involvement, you know, so I think we've gotten involved as much as we can. But if that happens and people still aren't happy, then another route is the referendum, and people can go out and, you know, if people are bummed about this, and I don't know what, you know, in our community, I've talked to a lot of people, I get a lot of people really bitter about Long Beach, Los Alamos being in the Congressional District, but I'm not hearing enough enthusiasm to really try to push further than just being irritated. But for that, you basically have to qualify a referendum by office. So, there's four, right? Congress, Assembly, Senate, and Board of Equalization. So, somebody that would have to go after a referendum would have to collect a ton of signatures, sort of like on a recall basis, a certain percentage of the number of people, and it's a big number, and they'd have to go statewide or district by district. And so, again, the bar is pretty high. So, in the next 20 to 30 days, I think you'll hear a lawsuit possibly being filed, and if it is, you'll hear very quickly, within four to six weeks, it'll be heard and it'll be over. And then, you'll hear, right after that, a potential for a referendum to be filed. I think for our community, if you look at the public comments on the wedrawthe lines.org, you'll see that there has not been a significant amount of public comment, other than from Los Alamos, for this entire district. And if you look at LA County on a Congressional District, the main comments had to do with El Segundo and Hawthorne and some of the areas up there where those are political battlegrounds, and there, I think there was more to those fights than what we were trying to do in preserving the communities of interest. So, I hope that everybody finds that useful, and you'll see the headline tomorrow on the paper will be that this thing is finally over. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the city manager?
Councilmember Poe actually stole my thunder. Westcom meeting is tomorrow. That is an example of a successful joint venture of three cities, and we want to continue that as long as we can.
Yes.
All right. At this point, we are going to adjourn the meeting, and the next meeting is scheduled